Ammonites are the generation of lawth who went behind Mithilistic blessings. So you should see what the anointing is going to plant on them. The generation of Azov who sold his blood. The Moabites who are cursed. And the generation of lawth who went behind Mithilistic blessings. And and Philistines who were challenging the anointing of them. Don't you know that Goliath was a curse? Certain people challenging the anointing, you have to plant on them. Then we can see Amalek. You have to meditate about this when you go home. So I was thinking about certain nations which the church has to plant on. The unknown one has to plant on. Which all nations should be planted. First we just meditate. The Aedong which sold out his birth, right? Second, the the nation of Moab who has words. Third, the Ammonites who are behind Mithilistic blessings. Third, the Philistines who were challenging the anointing. And fifth, Amalekites who were troubling the army of Israel. And who is this army? So the 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 army behind means that if we are in the front, the army behind are our generations. If there are any any evil powers which is trying to trouble our generations, we should not allow that. The the Amalekites, they they disguise. They are, they they do witchcraft. They can, they can move into the body of an animal. And when the Israelis were tired, they came to trouble and fight against the Israel army. There are certain powers which were trying to trouble and attack our generations with the power of the witchcraft and we have to take victory over that. So in this book, gold that Siloah which was dedicated in the temple, it has the experience of plundering these nations. Do you understand that? How many of you understand that? So when we come to dedication. First thing is not the food over there. First thing is the experience which God has given you. Allah was saying about this experience of going through the valley of death. Set up all the struggles which he was going through. You know the setup of the creeping is to which God has given. You have to dedicate to the experience which God has given you. You have experiences to share. How many of you have experiences that God has given to share? I told you in the beginning. That the dedication should not happen to the building. That we ourselves have to be dedicated. Why it should be to dedicate ourselves? First, because of the experience that God has given us. How many of you believe that this is my God has brought me here now? This is a great presence that the Lord has given here. This message, I am preaching today, I have never ever preached anywhere. Should I ever talk with my wife, she does not know God gave me this message? We have to bring the experience for the dedication. Second, we can see what Solomon brought. The five words, five we read. Ah, then the tent of the meeting and all the sacred funnies in it were brought. Not only the experience. We hope to meet the heart. And what is the heart? This is the Bumby. We must not click in front of the word of God. When they both were sharing their destiny. They came with the word of God. And why did they do that? Because they know Jenny Hope boys who can stand before the word of God. They can stand before the word of God. I don't want to extend. First of all, we have to bring our experience. Second? Bring the word of God. The third thing? Worst thing, worst thing? Sacrificing so many sheep and cattle, they that they could not be recorded or counted. Worship brings countless number of worship and thanks to the Lord. First of all, bringing the experience. Second, bringing the word of God. Countless worship. Countless worship. I give my worship. If Shalibas was worship in a meeting. We have a worship where man that this praise cannot be counted. We have a pastor. He will say hallelujah in bits of his speech. And for every word, he will say hallelujah. If he was built with the spirit, we we always want the meeting to be all of us as possible. And I started counting how many hallelujahs. And how many hallelujahs this pastor would say? After some time, I was forgotten. That pastor who was always saying hallelujahs and this this generation is now a blessed generation. So dear children of God. I'm not saying about just the today's building. But every day we thank the Lord. First, you have to bring your experience. Second, you have to bring a word of God. Lord, you're bringing countless praises and worship. The next we see. Verse nine. We can see here the poles are being shown over here. Know what does it mean? In the manner that people can notice. So when we come for worship, we have to, we have to show it so that people can see that. The ark of covenant is in between. The ark of covenant is in midst of the ark. The midst of the poles. The poles are the things which are exposed, so we have to expose our testimonies. How many of you hear that? So when we come to the presence of the Lord. The whole is simply exposed. We know that we read this at 1:28. The blessing is the person who works in the ways of the Lord. First, experience. First, we have to bring our experience. Second, we have to bring the word of God. Lord, we have to bring countless praises and worship. Bring, bring a good testimony with you. Expose our good testimony from you. What purpose men please, maybe? Where rather you live? What should be exposed from us? The Lord is a good testimony. How many years later be? What should be exposed from us? We should come with good testimony. Verse thirty. Second, according to chapter five, verse thirty. The musicians joined in unity to give praise and thanks to the Lord. It should not be that, there should be unity. That the father goes one way. And the mother goes the other way. The circle goes some other way. Everybody is coming in unity. Unity that comes with worship, Lord. There was a place where I, I preached as a child. There was a mental hospital in a place called Ula Barah. And I preached in a ground which is very near to that hospital. After the preaching, a doctor came to me and asked me to pray for him. I didn't know that he was a doctor. I prayed for him and also gave the the promise of the Lord. And whatever I I preached was all about his experience. And at that time, he introduced himself and told to pray for my patients. And the first time I'm seeing a hospital, that is a mental hospital. You all know about what happens in a mental hospital. There are many people who are very serious. Some of them are given shock and they are put in the prison. Some of them are climbing on the windows. So there are many people over there. And out of that ten people were brought to me to pray for them. They were all well dressed. And he said that they they are not so seriously mentally ill. And let's pray for them. And I prayed for them. And after the prayer, I had a doubt. And they were taking a lot of medicine and they were like very fat. The doctor was very thin. I asked the doctor, does this people hurt you? Doctor said, no, they won't hurt me. And I was like, why are you so confident in saying that? And the doctor said, because they are mentally ill, they will not hurt me. And I asked, why? And he said. If one tries to hurt me. There will be ten trying to hurt the person who is trying to hurt me. This is their problem. Do you understand that? And then I, when I preached about the children of God, I used to think about this. If one tries to hurt. There will be many who is trying to hurt the person who is trying to hurt. You should not be like that. And the king of ten people, they came together. What happened when they came in unity? When they did all these five things, what has happened here? And there we read. The side of the blessing, we have the experience. Praises and worship. The dedication of a champion in Germany, it's not because of a pastor who came from Kärler, that's why the presence of the Lord came in. Hallelujah. The presence of the Lord came down. The message I want to pass on to this clinic is. Not only that the presence of the Lord came in. In the chapter six, God spoke through that person. What was spoken over there? The Lord had said that he would dwell in the thick darkness. The Lord said that he would dwell in a dark cloud. What did he say? And in this translation, it says. He would dwell in the thick darkness. He would dwell in a thick darkness. Where is God dwelling? Thick darkness is where the presence of God is there with you. That is the speciality of a complete dedication. And it's thick darkness. To be able to pass on a message. Because we are afraid, I will not say that over darkness we go. There will be times that you have to go through thick darkness. God, we need darkness. That's not the fact that we'll be there, but the mic is not going with it. We all know that in Matthew chapter seven, verse fourteen, we read that, who about deaths, the word which God has said, will be like the person, the intelligent person. There are two houses over there. One place is built on sand. Both looks the same. The architects of both the houses are the same. Even though they look alike. Even though they look alike. But they they were facing two different problems in two different manner. Every beast will have three different problems. Every house will have three different problems. And what are those? First, there was a big rain. Next, there was a, there was a storm. Third, there was a flood. And what does it mean to have a big flood? A problem is come from above. And when we say about a big storm. The problem is comes from your side. And then we say about a flood. The problem is comes from beneath. And in the Christ, in 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 the Christian's life. There will be no problems will come. You have to say that. From which direction are the problems come? Will come from top. Come from beside. Come from beneath. But even mixed clouds with thick darkness. I was so happy when you were singing this song. Do you know why? Because God asked me to share this message in the morning. When we are going to sing. And in your last breath. Who is there with you? Don't fear the storms. I'm not just saying to you. But everyone who's here in me. Many of you, many sheep is going to sing. It makes a thick darkness. Who is there with you? Who is there with you? I would like to say, last thing that stop the message. When we, when we learn the Bible. There are two types of storms. One, the storm of correction. The storm of correction. The second one. The storm of perfection. The storm which is coming before you. You have to understand what is that. If it is a storm of correction. Or if it is a storm of perfection. If it is for perfection. There are four things. You can see four things from the side of God. Do you know which four? First of all, God is praying for you. The disciples who are going to the next show. The second one. He will come to you. He will come to you. And when will he come to you? In the in the midst of the night. How many are happening with us? The third thing. He will help me to grow. He will help me to grow. Let me sing in this water. Raise me out of this water. Lord, raise me to the next high. Take hold of my hand and raise me. And then we move away from the shore. When we think you're all alone. We can sit together. What will we do if we saw the great waves? If we all sit together. What is confident? Can you raise up and to the feet? We are going to take a look at this building for the presence of the Lord. Except Pastor Conformers. We were afraid to get our followers. We were meditating how we have to come for the dedication. To come with experience. To come with countless praises and. To come with a holy, good testimony. Don't think of anything else. Let us all cross our eyes. Let us all cross our eyes.